I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call?
Mayor Hasler.
Here.
Alderman Smith. Alderwoman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokurst. Alderman Eidman.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderwoman Armbruster.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Very good. Move for approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, takes us down to our C. Administrator's report.
So you've got a few added items left at your seat. We started our second phase of the G-Works software install. This is going to be more web-based. It's going to have a different look than what if you signed in to the one we got for the water utility. You'll see a difference in this. It'll be more up-to-date and it should include more links and information as we build it. It's not fully built out yet through G-Works. But we should have it online starting next week. It's called Front Desk. It'll be better in-house. It'll be better online for people to see, but it's going to be much better for staff because they're... Right now, we have to step through different pages to get to things. This will create lengths and it'll be easier to work with. It'll be a much more modern graphic interface, so we're looking forward to using it. And the customer company will probably be coming to us for an easement along the west property line of the northern Progress Parkway property so they can tap into water and sewer. They're going to do individual lines. We don't have anything that extends in front of that building. It would either be across the street or down to the east is where the sewer lines are. Or if you go back to the north, you've got sewer and water accessible right along the property lines. So it's the best spot for them to go. And they were promised that when we sold them the property.
So this water main deal being delayed to the 12th, is that really going to affect anything, our asphalt prices, or...?
I mean, asphalt prices seem to change every month. We weren't going to get started until August, probably middle of August or the end of September. There probably will be an index change, I suspect, but if we want to steer clear of the...
Right.
The county's fair, then we need to delay.
Yeah.
And they may get it done sooner, but they've got 45 days by contract. So if they can get it done sooner, then we'll have a moment coming as quickly as they can. Any other questions? Yeah, just keep going, all right?
Sure.
Want to load up there, Abby?
No, that's not. Things are going to be kind of sparse for a while. Honey Fustful is this weekend, starts at noon on Saturday. Still expecting a lot of people. We do have weather concerns, but that's, you know, outside activities. We'll see what happens. We've got the fireworks tomorrow night, the muni ban tomorrow night as well on Yanks Field. Other activities going on, and the movie in the park. I'll let Ashley explain that so she has something to talk about tonight.
I was hoping I could save my voice.
Oh, okay. But it's the first one for the Parks Department, so we'll see how that works out. Trying to also to reroute traffic, we're going to do a one-way traffic kind of setup. It was something they saw during the...
During the Jurassic Park event, we noticed that on Matthews Drive there along the soccer field, people will park on both sides of the road anyway, but they'll park along the side that they're driving on. So one of our volunteers for the park board, her and I noticed at the event, well, if we can just make that a one-way from J.C. Drive there ahead of the parkhouse to that little road that connects KSGM and Matthews, if we can make that a one-way and allow them to double-park, then cars can still safely get down the middle of the road. You don't have two cars trying to exit in opposite directions in a one-lane area. So I think that's what we're going to try and see how it goes.
Sure. Visitor Center had 2,346 people in May with Memorial Day weekend the busiest, and from staff's recollection, the busiest Memorial Day we've ever had. For June, we've had 458 visitors so far. On Tuesday, it was over 100, and that's unusual. But we got people coming into town, taking a look at stuff. So it's nice to see those numbers up. And we'll have updated numbers at the next meeting, what June looked like in total.
Abby, do we have an alternate date on the fireworks if there's rain ready?
No, because they're already tight as to when they can shoot the fireworks. And we were pushed off of the Fourth of July's and moved it back to the 25th. I think it's going to be... We hope that it doesn't rain. If it would rain that evening, it probably would just be further into the evening, whenever it dries out, stops raining or we stop having thunderstorms.
Any other questions? Corey, you're up.
Good evening. Before we got our six inch pot for the water line project is delivered, sitting down at Lift Station 1. We went up MB Construction and walked here the other day. And then on their collection side, we got the VFD that got hit by lightning. That is replaced. We're still waiting on the trade for six. There's going to be... That thing is so old, I don't know what way we're going to end up going, but we're exploring our options on it. And then on the wastewater treatment, the UV parts have been ordered. It's... Everything is on back order in light of the COVID, so... But yeah, they have been ordering. I think we got three to five weekly time on them, so soon as they get in, we'll get installed what needs to be.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
When MB's here, where are they going to stage their equipment when they're doing that water line project? I know the last time CE, they were up there on River View, up there where the old nursing home was, with equipment or...
Yeah, with the walkthrough, he said he's going to have a couple dump trucks and a enclosed trailer. So the dump trucks may be sitting at Pinkley Park or Lift Station 1. Their enclosed trailer will actually sit inside Lift Station 1's fenced-in area and will double look, and so they have access in and out. All their fittings will sit inside Lift Station 1.
Questions? Very good, thank you, Corey.
Thank you.
Chief.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Don't have much to report. As you can see, we have pretty well vacated the old space. There was some chance if it rained that Donzie was going to try to get in this week and start demo, but it didn't, so he didn't. But I think we're just about ready for that. Everything's cleared out and ready to get started. We've gotten set up and everything seems to be running smoothly at the new off-site. So guys are staying busy and pulling a lot of shifts, but I think everybody's doing pretty well, so...
Are you looking into part-time or are you happy with the temporary schedule?
We are. We've gotten a couple people that are interested in that. You know, obviously, we want to make sure it's a good fit and it fits into everybody's schedule. Some of them have limited availability as far as days or nights, so trying to fit around that to what we actually need and can work around. There's some possibility that we'll be able to start looking to replace one of our full-time by next month, so we'll start that process pretty quickly. But yeah, we've gotten some feelers out and we're trying to get that rolling and get some good candidates for that.
Right, was there any issues over the last couple of weekends with the UTVs?
No, I don't think we got a single call on that. And I think they had like 600 UTVs or something for that side-by-side ride. But I don't know that we had a single call on any of it, so everything seemed to go really smoothly, so...
Good.
Chief, on the push-to-talk feature, are your radios capable of that?
It's a mobile phone-based.
Oh, do you phone?
Yeah, so it's kind of like the old NextTales or whatever, but it's with the smartphone function. Seems to work pretty well so far, and there's not a terrible delay. It's maybe a second or two delay.
So as far as staffing, the critical times where you had two officers on, you know, you're still able to do all of that?
We're running two around the clock.
Right.
So we probably will for the rest of the time until we can add three around the clock or...
Right.
Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Any committee reports? Very good. Any public comments? Takes us to the planning and zoning, Joe?
Nope.
Any...
I'd like to hear more from you about the planning and zoning.
There's no public comments. Everybody have a look at the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Takes us to old business. Bill number... The second reading of Bill Number 4433, An Ordinance Amending the City of St. Genevieve Municipal Code of Ordinances, Chapter 520 Streets, Sidewalks and Other Public Places, Article 2, Excavation in Public Streets, Section 520.140, Work to Comply with Specifications as Set forth below. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, have a roll call, please.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Eidman.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderwoman Armbruster.
Yes.
Six yes, zero no's, two absent. Bill Number 4433, now becomes ordinance 4356.
Thank you. Takes us into new business. The first item is approval of a mower bid from Fleet's Equipment for our water sewer department.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Takes us to the first reading of Bill Number 4437, An Ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve Authorizing the Mayor to Enter an Agreement with SR Excavation of St. Genevieve, Missouri for the Valley Springs Estates Stormwater Pipe Project, the amount of $8,600.
Where... What line item are you planning on using for the extra funds?
Kind of figured that out yet, but it'll just be some... We've got some leftovers in. If we've got some in capital, we'll use that. We will use up what's in our stormwater fund.
Okay, great, thank you.
Our stormwater line item, yeah.
We didn't actually budget for this item. That was just an in-general item we put in for...
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, what caused this or what...
Pipe separation, so it's accepted or we adopted whatever stormwater system was in there. There's... The concrete pipes are apparently separating. They weren't put together solidly enough, and so you've got dirt that's beginning to get into these pipes. If we lined them, then that would seal them up and we wouldn't have any more problems with those pipes. It's in the back of Phil Lloyd's yard. He's seeing the yard's beginning to sink in that area.
What's been going on for a while?
Yeah, it's probably been... Gary and I talked about this last year. We couldn't get a solid price as to how much it was going to cost, so we finally got a good estimate, saw that it needed to be bid out, so that's why we're going through it now. We want to get to... We need to get it worked on. It's just going to keep getting worse.
So is that where you can see those little holes starting to develop and...?
Some places it's like that. Some we can use like flowable fill and that'll fix those holes. In this case, it's from what they've seen looking down in there, I think they may have run the camera, it looks like total separation or, you know, at least an offset, that you can't just put flowable fill to patch it up.
So are they actually digging the whole thing up and...?
No, we're going to just put a smaller... Since it's at the end of the line and the amount of stormwater that's coming through there, we can put a liner in there of PVC and that should seal it up.
Right. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for a second reading?
Second.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Takes us to Bill Number... The second reading of Bill Number 4437, An Ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve Authorizing the Mayor to Enter into Agreement with SR Excavation of St. Genevieve, Missouri for the Valley Springs Estates Stormwater Pipe Project, the amount of $8,600.
Motion to approve, second.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderwoman Armbruster.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Eidman.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Six yes, zero no's, two absent. Bill Number 4437, now becomes ordinance 4357.
Is there any other business, Joe? Well, if there's no other business, I'll call this meeting adjourned. We'll jump right into our little session. Move for approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Such enthusiasm.
So the first item is that the Rotary Club is looking to do a service project, and the idea is to install trees along our path down on Progress Parkway. Walking bike trail. Jared Richardson is here from the Rotary Club and he's spearheading this project, so we will let him tell you all about it.
That's right. So I'm a very visual person, so I put something together so you guys can see what the Rotary Club has decided on doing here. And really, the goal behind this project...
Jared, if you could stand up by your microphone. Throw your mic.
Yeah. The most recent project that we did was a pavilion, you know, down here in downtown space. Before that, we did the large sign in front of the community center. So those are some big projects that the Rotary Club has, you know, forked the bill over for, which is fine, that's what our goal is to do. But right now, as a club, we've decided to maybe pump the brakes a little bit on the spending, try to do something a little bit cheaper, but do something that's also going to make an impact. And that's why we've, as a club, brought the idea of, well, a lot of people use Progress Parkway and there's not a lot of shade. I know there's the pavilions there that make for some nice shade, but I drive by there often and I've been driving past the... Maybe every day for the last three weeks while we work on this project. And it seems like those little pavilions just get baked in the sun. And so many people are using this pathway. So my goal, being an insurance guy, is one, trees can be an absolute headache, so I understand that. So we did some research. We did some legwork on what trees would be best for this area. And after about 12 or 15 trees that are native to this area, would thrive in this area, we boiled it down to four. Those four turned into two. So now we just have some standard trees that we're looking at to provide some shade at both entrances of Progress Parkway. And the goal... So I have a $2,000 budget to do this. And the real goal is to try to get as mature of a tree as we can and also have it professionally installed, have water bags attached to this, and let these trees thrive in an area that they're not going to be a nuisance. The roots on these trees are not invasive. These are strong trees. We narrowed it down to the male ginkgo and the yellow tulip poplar trees. So nice native trees. I'll pass this out to you guys where it's got more details and it's got the actual visual on this. But the original goal was, you know, decorate Progress Parkway. And that just is a vision. That's obviously a kind of more of a just kind of dreaming, throwing out some good ideas, what we can do. But really, that's way too much work, you know? It's isn't the... We're not trying to impress... I don't know, it would be nice to impress people they came here and they saw that kind of stuff. But again, we're just trying to... You know, we got $2,000. We got an area of need, but the goal is to make sure that this doesn't become a problem here. And I skipped you today. I brought just enough copies for these. You guys like to see this here. So that's the goal behind it.
That's good.
Spoke with Father Neemeth and he's okay for what I called, I believe, the east entrance. I kind of made that up. I don't know if you guys call it the east entrance, but I call it the east entrance down by M Road. Does that make sense at all? Spoke with Father Neemeth about that. He said we're good. We are within the easement of the 30-foot easement. And the Rotary application is due on the 30th, so what we're going to spend on the application is the club has approved three to eight native trees in this area, doing the upkeeping that, you know, we're going to do to get these things started. But that's why we're going to make sure that's okay with you guys, because once these trees are, you know, maturing, what are we going to do? So really, that's what we're needing approval for.
Happy on this west end and stuff. That's not going to impede any access to that ground.
No, because you already got the pavilion at that point.
Right, yeah, this is... The east end looks like it's kind of... The three trees are kind of around the pavilion. But on the west end, it's kind of away from the pavilion and stuff, more in that field.
I'd like to add also in those diagrams, we're open to ideas. We're open to how we're going to design it, where those trees are going to go. We're going to make sure we call dig-right, make sure we're in, you know, not getting any lines. So that, I would consider that to just be kind of a proposal, where we're going to put these trees. But the idea is to put at least three shade trees, you know, where we can, around that pavilion where it's not going to be a problem and still do its job.
I think the initial drawing had them around it. Jared relocated them a little, what, east of there?
Yeah, so they're all on that side of the... On the south side of the sidewalk on that west end.
Okay, so they're all of them are in the...
But that is our property that's illustrated by the field where you can see the edge of the building.
It's actually not our property, but we have a 30-foot walking trail easement there that involves landscape also.
I would say as long as the... Either these trees, their roots aren't going to... The plant is close enough to tear up that... That would be my biggest concern because we're having that on the sidewalks.
I agree, yeah.
I don't know much about those trees or...
The way I look at it too is that's the Heisel property that's in behind those trees.
Right, that's what I wanted to make sure. We're not limiting anybody's access to the property.
Well, yeah, because there's going to have to have... The five acres of ground there where those three trees are...
Is no longer...
Is... We don't... The city doesn't own it. We sold that and there's planning on putting some more apartments in there, so...
Okay.
I don't know how that'll work with...
Yeah, even if it'd be okay to put a tree there, I think having a... Would that be something that would be more reasonable? Or would you think trees in that area is just ultimately a no-go?
I don't...
I like trees.
I love the trees.
Okay.
Good project.
But you know, the project is he... I don't know exactly what he plans on doing out there, but he's... There's going to be a parking lot there. You can see what he's got now and it could be similar to that.
Yeah.
So we don't know where the entrances are going to be.
We don't know where the entrance is going to be yet, so that's the only kicker there. One want to plant the trees and then have to uproot everything.
Are you saying this doesn't impact Gary at all then and his crew?
Oh, it will.
From a maintenance standpoint? What's his opinion on this? Do we know? Have we talked to him?
It's a beautification project. You just work your way around.
Yeah, I think we... I don't think that's going to be an issue.
I mean, it's a great project, but I...
Yeah, I don't think that's going to be an issue, yeah.
Okay. If for some reason Gary was just up in arms about it, I'd like to know that and why, but...
He's...
That'd make sense to have his blessing plus the property owner.
I'm more concerned about the property owner than anything we need.
Yeah, I mean, if you put one tree right behind the pavilion, I mean, he's not going to put the entrance right there.
Right. Is there a reason you moved it to where it was parallel with Progress Parkway and down from the pavilion?
No, just to give a different look. Just kind of going through some just prototypes on what we can kind of do there, what's going to be, you know, is there the expansion that you brought up? Maybe that makes sense. But I also kind of thought, whenever I was sitting in my office today, the tree might be a little bit too close to the apartment complex. And I thought, I don't want to deal with that. So that's why I moved him over there to get him away from everything.
That's the same owner owns the property.
Yeah, he's going to eventually build right there on that five acres.
Yeah, so I... I mean, I kind of want to keep the trees away from him unless he's okay with them. Ultimately, it is our tree. It is our responsibility. So if something were to happen, it's... You know, if something were to happen to his building, if a tree were uprooted and hit his building, it's on us. So that's why I'm thinking from an insurance standpoint to stay clear. If he is okay with it, then we need to know as our group that we are taking on that risk. The one down more closer to M Road, very little risk over there, you know? There's also other little smaller pavilions throughout that walkway, you know? And Rotary Club can have three matching grants for one project. So this could be phase one, this could be phase two, this could be phase three. And when you drive down that way, those red pavilions just scream for, hey, let's put some trees there. And we could even go that route, you know? I am open, the club is open to that. We're not just sold just on this. We just want to get some trades, you know, some shade where it's going to not be a problem and help people out. So I'm okay even if we have to move it from that first spot closer to this apartment.
I wouldn't say that, but we could.
Until we know what's going on.
Until we know what's... Take those three and go somewhere else with them on one of them.
I'm all right with that.
I think we do that because that'll give us time to see where we're going to be at with that.
Yeah.
Because I wouldn't want to take the tree out.
Me neither, me neither. Once they're all grown and looking good.
The idea of having those three trees around that little pavilion, you know, would one... Would function a whole lot better, you know, than having them down the road and stuff. I mean, as far as rest and tool and...
Sure, sure.
They are hot.
It is, yeah, it is.
You talked about an easement through there and stuff. I mean, what is the outside the pavement, how much property?
The pavement doesn't even take up the full 60-foot roadway, so... 60-foot of roadway and then there's a 20-foot utility easement and a 30-foot walking trail easement on both sides right there.
So 60-foot for the roadway, then 20-foot?
For utility.
Right.
Same 20, that's part of the same 30, yeah. So it comes quite a ways off the road, probably 35 foot off the road.
I'm not familiar with either of these species of trees. Are they softwoods, hardwoods?
There are... I'm not certain on how to answer that, but I know that there are sturdy trees that are going to splinter.
You spoke to John Carroll?
Yeah, I spoke with John Carroll about it for... Talked about it for a long time. I had another resource where I spoke about these trees. The yellow poplar, the tulip, that's our native tree in Perry County, but it's really, really popular here, so that's going to do well here. And then the male ginkgo tree is a common tree, and it's specific to be the male, not the female, because it doesn't give off an odor or a seed. But these two trees in particular are just your hardy, can thrive in the middle of nowhere and not cause a lot of problems.
So this particular tulip doesn't have the big flowers on it?
At some point, it will have a nice flower on it. Yeah, I'm not sure how long they'll have them on there, but throughout the year, it gives off a really nice look, that tree in particular. Yeah, the male ginkgo is just kind of a... If you just look in the wood, you kind of... It just kind of looks like a normal tree. Kind of leaning towards the poplar that that one gets in, but we're going to decide that as a club if everything goes as planned.
You talked about a water thing.
Yeah, so the trees need water, you know, while they're growing. And there's some 20-gallon water bags that can be attached to it and can slowly give it the right amount of water while it is trying to grow. So I think that would be worth the money. What was it, 50 bucks for two of them? So they're within our budget and that's going to help you guys not have to worry about them, us not have to worry about them, and the trees get the right amount of water.
So, and you talked about professionally planting these trees and stuff. I mean, they would probably be state protected from mower stuffs and...
Yeah, that's the goal. That's the goal. So, you know, $2,000, a five-to-six-foot tree is 100 bucks, to a 150, depending, like, who really knows? So the more that we thought about it, the more we thought, well, let's get some more matured trees and let's get the cost to get them professionally installed, you know, and just do it right. So that's why we're going for a little less trees, get the bags to go around it, get the protection it needs. And if we can afford to get it professionally installed, then we're going to do that.
I think it's a good idea, you know?
I agree.
It's pretty chic.
To go.
Yeah.
So what are your approvals, that we, that we do the three trees down by M Highway, and then the individual ones at the smaller pavilions? Till we get something clear.
Yeah, we don't wanna, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, you wanted to plant six trees, right?
Yeah, you know, the budget is really important, that we can at least get, you know, the, the three matured trees at M Road would be really nice. And then if we have enough to worry about the pavilions throughout, then, you know, we'll have the remaining budget, but.
I'd like to stay away from up there to that property.
Me too, me as well, me as well, I'm with you on that one.
Okay. Jared, thank you very much.
Good deal, thank you guys.
That's awesome.
Yeah, it seems like a lot of people park down towards M Road when they're walking that path. So if we get more of them planted down there, that might be the better deal.
There's a couple of eyebrows or areas for parking that were built into the road.
Right. It's nice to have organizations do this.
Yeah, that's awesome, that's fantastic. David?
So I just want to take a few minutes, I think, uh, over the past year or so, we've talked about, if you'll pass those, I appreciate it, just front and back, we've talked about um, just updating job descriptions and uh, performance reviews, and um, I know Happy and I chatted about, you know, who takes care of social media? Because it is, you know, it's a job function, I don't know that it's out there or anybody's right now, but we just kind of piecemeal it together. Uh, is it on somebody's job?
Megan takes care of it for City Hall mostly, and then uh, the hard tech staff down at the Welcome Center.
But, and I'll put stuff on there once in a while, so I saw this class, it was offered by an attorney who deals with communications and social media law. Um, so just took some notes on it, and Happy and I discussed it, so just wanted to inform you a few things. And it not, not only applies to, so this would be only government, right, only the government can uh, take, infringe on your First Amendment rights, so the city's Facebook page, but if you have a Facebook, well, Twitter, Instagram, whatever, social media page, that you run as an elected official, that would be treated the same way, not your personal ones, but if you run it as an elected official. So the Supreme Court has ruled that in uh, there's three types of public forum, uh, non-public forum, so just because we have City Hall doesn't allow you to come into City Hall, because it's a locked door, and say whatever you want, that's not your First Amendment right. Um, traditional public forum, so obviously you have the right to stand out on public property with a sign, or whatever you wanna do, at any time, really, as long as you're not breaking the law. And then limited public forum, which is what social media is, and same thing as when we have our public comment. You can limit time, place, and manner, kind of like signs. You can tell people they have to be here a certain time, you can tell them they can only have five minutes, you can say you have to speak into the microphone, you can't have a bullhorn up at the podium, um, that type of stuff. So limited public forum, social media falls under that uh, realm, um, which is really what I, you know, wanted to hear about taking this uh, webinar. So comments on social media are, are basically then fall under folks' First Amendment rights. So they can say, you know, whatever they want with some limitations. And we, we shouldn't be really deleting or taking those down just because we're offended by them. Um, and we don't, um, I don't, I talked with Megan today, there've been a few times that things have been said. Um, we've taken posts down, but not comments. And same thing would be said for if you had someone who was making a lot of negative comments, you can't block them. So you can't take away their right to make a comment on your government social media page. Uh, the only things that are limited, I, I gave you the list there, if you have any questions, you can let me know, but obviously obscenity, defamation, so that's false, that cause harm, um, not just false, but they have to have some sort of impact. Um, actual threats, uh, I gave you some examples there. Spam, uh, two really kinds of spam, like you can't be on a city post about uh, roads, and then make an advertisement for your uh, building, uh, you know, building, county building. And then you obviously can't say the same thing over and over and over and over and over, you got, you can delete those except for the first one. Um, illegal actions, so you can't uh, attempt to commit a crime or encourage others to commit a crime. Um, power links, uh, promoting illegal discrimination. So again, you can share your opinion, but you can't say, you know, I wish the city wouldn't allow people from Farmington, whatever, to come from, you know, I'm, I'm just picking a, a nice group there, sorry for the folks from Farmington. But you can give your opinion about that. And then, of course, there's copyright infringement, which we really don't deal with on social media from our standpoint, mostly to do with music and video, things of that nature. Keep in mind that social media platforms can limit certain speech, so Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, they have their own rules that aren't part of what we impose. So if you uh, use profanity, I believe on Facebook, it's taken down if it's reported, that's not us, right? That's Facebook, or one of the social media platforms. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, hiding and deleting comments can be considered violating free speech. Um, we can post rules and regulations on comments, uh, but if they're not followed, no matter the comment, again, there's uh, some concern there that you're violating the First Amendment. And then I just wrote this last part there because I get this question sometimes, there's not a hate speech exception to the First Amendment. Um, I would kind of wish there was, but there isn't. Um, so there's no hate speech violation to the First Amendment. You can violate someone's human rights, particularly if you use hate speech and, and incite violence or criminal action or something of that, but you still have the right to say whatever you want. That's my five to ten-minute summary, and just wanted to let you all know, because we do have, of course, have our own Facebook page. Any questions?
Um, David, one thing that we might wanna check on, um, you mentioned that there's been some posts in the past that have been taken out for whatever reason. Um, I don't know if that has to be accounted, like, maybe screenshot it before it gets deleted for public.
From a record retention standpoint? I believe the post is still available to the administrator. But I'm not positive, if you know.
Because I'm, I'm not positive on that, because I'm like, I know Facebook has, like, on at least personal accounts, they have like a thirty-day trash file now, I think, or something.
That's something we'll check on.
But that might be something we need to look at, is if we need to take some sort of screenshot of that in the comments to save for records requests.
True.
Depending on the nature of it, at least. These days, you can't be comparable.
Any other comments or questions?
There's nothing, nothing that says, you know, if you post and people comment, you have to leave it for X amount of, of days, weeks, months. I mean, if we post something, it's no longer timely, and we just decide we wanna take it down. That's just because it's no longer timely, not, and if it's got one or two comments, that's irrelevant to why we're taking it down.
I mean, you, I think, I believe you can put timeframes on that stuff. Uh, I'm not a Facebook expert by any means, but I believe you can put timeframes on that, so that it kind of drops off, yeah.
I think that's where your screenshots would come in, so you'd still have it, so we just leave it up if it's maintained or retained by Facebook.
Yeah, or even if it, I don't even know, maybe like a, like a Word document or something, where you just copy and paste the post, or, or something in, instead of screenshot. I don't, I don't know what type of records would be required of it, but some sort of log with those types of posts, and what date it was deleted.
The Secretary of State has a record retention site, so we can just double-check that.
There are sites that will do that for you, but they're expensive.
Yeah.
Because of the amount of information you can put out there that you would have to retain.
All right, David?
Thanks, David.
That'd be some good information, your.
Always learning.
Your Facebook page. It's too there.
Thank you.
Sure enough. So we have our budget calendar for this year, uh, we're doing the tenure plan updates right now. Next month, we'll be getting with the department heads. Included with this, if you'll look on the second page, or you can say the third page, there's a board questionnaire. This is the same thing we put out last year, and we got some good comments back on. I would uh, ask the members to fill that out as best as possible, hand it in, and I'll compile the information. And we'll see what we can fit into our budget.
I believe last year you emailed it to those of us, it was really horrible handwriting, would you mind doing that again?
I'm pumped.
Thank you.
So going over the calendar first, we're going through the budget with the department heads in July. Please mark August nineteenth as a work session between board meetings. And we'll have the department heads come in and present their capital, uh, the capital wishes.
Six o'clock on that one?
Yep.
Thank you.
We will, it'll probably take about two, two and a half hours. Uh, we'll see, we'll, we'll filter through it when we go through our, our budget line item uh, discussion, and then bring those to you, but you'll still have a limited amount of money that you can spend that night, just like any year you've, you've been doing budgets. And then we hope to have it adopted by the last work, or last session in September, September twenty-third, and it starts October one. A little bit about the budget, just kind of explains what the purpose is behind it. Uh, and then we've got the board questionnaire, and then on the back of the board questionnaire is trying to highlight what we've been able to accomplish in the last year, and what the requests were. Uh, so we haven't been able to finish everything, it looks like, uh, a few things are gonna tail end of the next budget year. Uh, we may not get the paving done until end of September, end of October. The remodel probably won't be done until October, um, because they're figuring twelve weeks. They might get a little demolition done between now and when they're gonna start after the Fourth of July, but still, there, there'll probably be some delay at some point, uh, so expect that, but we'll get the majority of it done. Any questions?
So how are our tax receipts year-to-date?
Uh, so far, so good on the sales tax, our uh, use tax has gone down a little bit. But we've seen a small increase in sales tax. We see that as uh, people aren't buying online, they're buying in the stores, so that's good, uh, so we're seeing it that way. Um, a total, I haven't figured out what the, what the totals are yet, we'll, we'll work on what we, what we estimate revenues will be next month. Same time, we're working with the department heads, figure out what that, what our reserves are, figure out what we think revenues are gonna be based on what we've seen this year, and then go from there.
Speaking of our uh, general revenue, we have not transferred any more of the money out of that account uh, on the sale of the three parcels of property, correct?
No, because we, we agreed that the six hundred and fifty, we did three hundred and twenty-five thousand, and this budget year, we're gonna do three hundred and twenty-five thousand next budget year.
Right, but what about the other two, the five acres and the two acres?
But those were part of that, that deal.
That's right.
Yeah, so they were separate parcels, kind of what you'll see with Progress Parkway.
So that'll stay in the general?
Yeah, that's where, that's where we're leaving it to sit. At this point. Any other questions?
So when do you need your questionnaire back?
Uh.
July fifth?
Yeah, week of July fifth, absolutely, it gives me about a week to put it together, and then when we sit down with the department heads, I can say, here's what we're, what the board is looking for, what can we do? And then we can bring that to you in a final form when we get together in August. And this is a chance for you to talk to your, to your residents, get their input, we need the public input on this. See what they want, see what you've heard that we need to include, and we'll do our best to do it. Again, our focus is probably gonna be on infrastructure, streets, we're gonna look more at sidewalks, we've already talked about that. Uh, I've got like little pieces of paper that I kept tossing into my, my budget, my bu, my budget folder, saying, here's some things we need to think about. So we've got a number of things that we've looked at over the year, that we'll, we'll toss in there, see what fits.
Are there any grants out there for sidewalks?
I thought, well, there are, but it's a, they limited it this last year, the tap grants. At first, they said there wasn't anything available, and then they said they were available. So it was like a month that you were able to apply for them. We didn't have anything drawn up, drafted, no plans, didn't have any money set aside to, to, you know, to, it's usually a matching grant, twenty, either eighty-twenty or seventy-five-twenty-five. But we'll look at that if we have, if, if they're still available. But, and I don't know if the sidewalks that were put out on thirty-two were a tap grant, I would suspect they were, uh, as part of the S T P program, but it's a different, uh, different set. Uh, the problem with those may be if it's not on a listed major artery, that you can't just do it in neighborhoods. It has to be on either a listed road or on a state highway.
You had said that our use tax was down. Uh, any idea how much, and what compromises that, or what contributes to that fund?
That is what is brought, bought online. Use taxes, anything that's purchased outside of the, if it's, if it's like a catalog sale or an online sale, anything that's not taxed, because the nexus of that, of that business is in town, where you purchase it. So that's gonna be anything that's, that's purchased outside of, outside, you're doing it at home, but it's purchased outside the city.
And we only have that available, or that's only enforced in the city limits, the same gen, not in the county.
Right. Because taxpayers pass that, so the state collects it for us, you know, they know what our, what our tax amount is, they know who qualifies for that. That will change with the Wayfair uh, 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 Supreme Court decision, so that you don't have to have just a nexus in the state to be able to charge the use tax. If you buy something in the state, and even if it doesn't have a business center in the state, you would still have to pay a sales tax. So that'll change and probably increase that amount a little bit. And then, but yeah, and then the sales tax is just up. We're, we're figuring, again, it's gonna be because people are buying things inside city limits, and that's reflecting on our, on our regular sales tax.
But that Wayfair ruling and stuff, though, is still not, that's still not gonna prevent an out-of-state company from doing business in the county and not paying the full sales tax rate in our county, they can still cross the state line.
Right.
Right. That's the tax the county tried to get passed a couple of years ago and failed and stuff, but.
Yeah, we saw the increase with COVID, because people were buying a lot online and having it shipped. And then, I think now people are getting back out in the stores, we're not seeing that. Yeah, so the county missed out on those, those potential funds.
Well, it just greatly handicaps the local business when somebody out of state comes in here, and the county and those businesses and stuff.
One more? Any other questions? Um, we're adjourned, we'll adjourn for the evening.
Thank you.